And the Activities Bus, Tel City Troy Township School, the requested amount is $25,000 for a total ARP funding of $67,000. Adopted this 15th day of May, 2023.
Okay. Counsel, just to bring you up to something that was brought out to me, I think all of you have a copy of this letter in your folders. You should. It's from Dan Luttrell. Looks like, Gary, it's right there in your left folder. Julie, Gary. Okay. Dan Luttrell did reach out to me regarding the tapping fees, and he wanted me to share this letter with you all. He was writing his support for incentives for home developers that want to build homes within the city limits of Tel City. He goes on to outline that their family, as you know, Luttrell Brothers have developed subdivisions since the 1960s in Tel Cities, Burglum Hills and so forth, several, a couple different times there, as well as what they called the Werner Farm down on 29th and 33rd Street. In 2006, he was approached wanting to, was approached to ask to expand Burglum Hills North Phase One, and he did do that. He's since set on these lots for quite a while, he felt, with not a whole lot of interest. These are lots that already have curb, guttering and so forth through them. Just recently, there's been several new homes built up in that area, maybe four, five? I don't know. Currently, Ron Smith, the gentleman who built, and his investors who built the apartment complex on 7th Street, is building what they call a spec home in that area, which is a home basically finished. He's building it, hoping somebody likes it in the choices he picks. So with the housing shortage that we do have in this community, I feel that home will probably sell rather quick. And Ron does build nice homes, and I haven't heard a lot of people complain about him, so that's a good thing. What he's wanting to see is maybe more developers will want to build spec homes or just individuals such as yourselves, or anybody that wants to move to Tel City. As you know, we do have a housing crisis in this community, in this county as well, too. And, you know, you've got Forest Canton, Hoosier Heights, and the Highlands, all are three subdivisions that are either developing or currently building homes in them. We don't have a lot of places in Tel City subdivisions with open space. Burglum Hills would be considered a subdivision, and we do have open space there. So he's basically sent a letter asking for reconsideration for that, to help incentivize builders and individuals that want to build homes in this community. We do need to work to meet the needs of our employers, who say we need bodies, we need residents to move here, and houses is the magic thing that they're asking for right now. So basically, a reconsideration for that.
Well, I got a comment, and I had not seen that letter.
Okay.
But after thinking here, you know, we're getting all this development, and it's going to be adding value to Troy Township, it's going to be adding value to Perry County from the standpoint of assessed valuation. But how much assessed valuation is that adding to our city? None.
Well, those three, that's outside city, do not.
No, they're not adding a single dollar to the city's tax base or that. So that was one thing that I thought of with that there, was the fact that at least that would be stimulating development within our city, and it would be increasing our tax base, which is all cities wish to do that, obviously. The bigger the tax base, the greater revenue you will secure from that. So again, I had that thought before I saw that letter.
Okay. That was a nice letter, and I had a lengthy discussion with Dan, very good discussion, and I appreciate his investment in developing that up there. And I also had discussions with Ron and some other citizens that felt that having this incentive would help. Just as Klein said in her video, every little bit helps when you're trying to build something like that. If you're going to build a $200,000 home, which is probably what a house costs nowadays to build, I mean, I don't know. They're not, if material's still expensive, this helps a little. So I just wanted you to add that for reconsideration. If not, it's out there. Habitat could use it for a home.
I still have a lot of concerns about it, and I cannot support it. And the main reason I cannot support it is because of the details. Who is eligible for this? Who is eligible for this?
Well, those are details that we will still have to iron out, yes.
Well, before I can support it, I need to know the details, Chris. I mean, is this going to be limited to people, new people moving into Tel City? Or can anybody take advantage of it? Is the builder going to get the refund, or is the homeowner going to get the refund? What price of the home? The spec home that's being built in Burglum Hills now? I was told it will sell somewhere between $340,000 and $350,000. That's what Ron told me.
Okay.
Okay. The people that are eligible, I mean, the homeowners, any income guidelines? Are we just going to give this to anybody? Is it the details that are lacking that I'm concerned about?
We can, tell you what, if, and if counsel wants to table that part, if you give me the next, till the next meeting, I'll try to write up some, if you want to sit down, or any of you, we can write up some details for consideration if that helps. I don't have a problem with that.
I prefer that as well.
That's not a bad idea.
Not at all.
So not asking for a no vote, it's not dying for any reason, it's just you want clarity. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's doable.
The notice has already been published on this, so if you table it over at a public meeting, you don't have to publish notice again to consider it at a future meeting.
So we can have it for our June?
June meeting.
First?
No, it's not June.
No.
June 5th, I think.
That sounds right.
Has anybody checked with Baker Tilly or the state board accounts? Is this something that is a legitimate use of ARP funds?
I have not. Now, I'm not saying Kelly may have. I've not spoken to her about it, but I can. I'll have to ask. I don't, I don't know that answer. But I will get clarity from them, too. So I'll get clarity from them, and I will work the next couple of weeks on some guidelines for these here for consideration. If you guys want to change them at that point, then you could. Does that make sense? Y'all comfortable with that?
I'll make a motion. The tap-in fee, capacity fees will table till the next meeting.
Okay. Got a motion made by John. Is there a second?
Second, or Julie?
Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on it is the Perry County Veterans Transportation. We do have Kevin out here.
Okay, so they do approve all the others?
Veterans office. Well, we need to make a motion.
Right now, we've just tabled the one. So they need to, I think they'll be able to act a little more quickly on the others.
So is there a motion to approve the other to the Perry County Veterans Transportation for $10,000, and the Activities Bus for the Tel City Troy Township School for $25,000?
I would like those to be several motions.
That's fine. Do you want to start with the, anybody want to start with the Perry County Veterans Transportation?
I'll make a motion. We approve that.
Motion made by John. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gary. All those in?
Any questions?
Sorry.
Details again. Who is going to be eligible for this money?
I'll let Kevin speak on that. He's right there, if that's okay. Basically, we will, they will, we'll write them a check, right, Connie?
Write who a check?
I'm going to let her finish writing real quick.
The county.
The county that will go in that account.
His budget goes through county funds. He does not have a separate account for this. When I worked there, they didn't have, okay?
It's a transportation budget for the VA driver. That's what this was for.
We have a van, VA van that goes back and forth to Louisville, Orangeville, Evansville, transports veterans to their doctor's appointments. This is a volunteer type of gig, always has been, but you're asking for somebody to dedicate four to six hours a day to take a veteran to their doctor's appointment free. And it's tough keeping drivers, and so I approach ARP to be able to fund this. And how I broke it down was $50 a trip for a four to six hour trip, just flat fee, $50. And I have about two trips a week, so I buy that out, but not by the whole year, it's $52,000 a year. So the county gave me $5,000 for this. That secures one year to be able to pay my drivers back and forth to the VA. Again, this fund secures two more years, so I'll be able to have three years of funding to be able to pay my drivers, to take our veterans to their doctor's appointments. And, you know, the VA takes care of the maintenance of this vehicle, they take care of the gas for this vehicle. So the county or the city or anybody's not responsible for anything out of that. So this is just asking for, you know, pay our drivers, dedicate their time, take our veterans, a little incentive for doing that.
So the county allocated $5,000 or $3.5 million?
And also, they funded $5,000 for veteran outreach, and $1,000 for veteran hats, t-shirts, and clothes, to be able to advertise veteran services. And, go ahead, let veteran services do us for the county. In 2020, I've got the figures here. In 2020, when I took over veteran services, Wayne Hoover, we had a thing called the Veteran GDX. It's broken down by county, how much compensation and pension comes in the county, how much expenditures comes in the county. That's through, you know, paying for doctor's bills for veterans, transportation, anything medically that exists in this county. In 2020, veteran compensation that come into the county was $4,708,000. In 2022, that went up from $4,708 to $6,888,000. That's a 20% increase in two years. We also lost 76 veterans in that time period. So our 10%, we have 1,408 veterans in Perry County. That's almost 10% what Perry County population is, is veterans. We lost 76 of those veterans in two years. Total expenditures coming to the county went from $9,409,000 to $11,218,000. So in 2020, I went to Perry County Hospital, had a meeting with the CEO, CFO, by getting Perry County as a goal, getting VA network, so our veterans can come here for their care, not have to travel anywhere. Took us about six months, we got that done. So this tells me from 2020 to now, that the revenue coming to our county went up $2 million for Perry County, except veterans and patients. So veteran service brings a lot to the community. So just by asking for $10,000 from the city ARP to support the transportation, taking our veterans to appointments, and paying our citizens, volunteering their time for that, a little incentive, to me is, you know.
And I have no problem with that, I really don't. What I have a problem with is that Tel City is part of the county, and this is a county service. And we were told the last time that the county had put in $10,000.
They did.
Yeah, $10,000, actually, because it was $5,000 for transportation, $5,000 for community access, $10,000 for veterans. But I also, veterans live in Tel City, too, you know, and the majority of our veterans in Perry County live in Tel City, even in your district. So you're supporting them, too, the ones that vote for you. To me, that's not a county thing. It's mandated by the state for the county to have a VA, so that's put on the county to be able to pay my salary, pay any other expense, just the state. That's a county choice, that's a state choice. So by the city just helping a little bit with the county, which we have three cities in Perry County, and veterans live in every one of those cities, a lot of them, it's just how veterans live here, too.
And I understand that, as a member of the city council, I'm interested in considering the citizens of the city. Tel City citizens pay county taxes, all city taxes. Veterans of the county do not pay the city tax. So I continue to, and again, the lacking detail, I understand what you're trying to do, and we have a question in the county, though. Is there a timeline that these funds have to be spent? I know the city has a timeline.
2020, they have to be allocated by the end of 2024, and they have to be spent by the end of 2026.
Okay, so even when we issue a check, though, to the county?
They will have to spend those funds by 2026.
They will have to spend those funds by 2026.
Yes, because they are ARP funds.
Okay.
That is the way I understand it.
And has this been checked with Baker Tilly or the state board accounts as to whether it's a legitimate use of ARP funds?
I have not.
I have not.
So we could add that to our question.
When I applied for this, it was through the governmental services for ARP. They had that open for government to ask for schools, veteran services, different organizations. That's when I requested this, was there that time period?
Any other questions?
We can add that to our question to Baker Tilly, just to make sure.
Sure. And honestly, I might just ask the county, because the county's already ran through. There's no sense in us paying Baker Tilly to answer the same question that is answered on the other side. Save us, maybe $10, I don't know, but save us money. Okay. So, all right, so we'll start first with the Perry County Veterans Transportation for $10,000. Is there a motion to approve that? Did you make one, John?
I made the motion, yes, sir.
And then, somebody second that?
Not yet.
You made the motion, but who made the second?
Somebody did.
Julie might have seconded. Did you second it, or Gary? Or maybe no one did.
I don't think anybody did, yeah.
No.
I made a motion, and Larry asked for a discussion.
Yeah, I have Gary as the second.
Okay, Gary did second.
I had Klein did here, but yes.
All right. I knew someone did, because, so is there still any other discussion?
So if we approve this, you are still, you're going to check with Baker Tilly or the county?
Yes, to make sure it's still an eligible expense. Yeah, we will. So any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Next item is Activity. Kevin, thank you for your time today, too. And thank you for your service. Activities Bus, Tel City Troy Township School Corporation, $25,000. Is there a motion to approve that?
So move.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Great. All right. Additional appropriation resolution 2023-13?
Yes.
Okay. I'll drive this one. Whereas it has been, additional appropriation resolution 2023-13. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one, be ordained by the city of Tel City, Perry County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit for the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified, seventy-two laws governing the same. Cemetery, grounds, maintenance, $2,000. Board of Public Works, CDL training, $12,530. Parks and Recreation Department, maintenance supervisor, $9,600. Maintenance labor, also under the Parks and Rec, $3,850. Total City General Fund, $27,980. Lowet Public Safety, Lowet SRO police car, $30,000. Total Lowet Public Safety, $30,000. Adopted the 15th day of May of 2023. Is this, you guys want to vote, what? I'm faster than you. I read it quickly.
These were all given a motion of intent to approve it at tonight's meeting.
Do you all want to do these in a lump sum? Or does somebody have a specific one that they're concerned over?
I make a motion, we approve all of them at one motion.
Motion by John. Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion?
Do you want to, one thing, Bill?
Oh, what did I type wrong, Larry? Go for it.
You spelled it wrong.
I'm tired tonight.
I've got my head in the food truck.
Because you're tired, I'll keep a chart.
Okay, that's fine.
I just would like to point out that the $27,980 we're taking out of the general fund to pay all of these expenses could also come out of ARP funds. Am I correct on that, Ms. Berger?
On the park and rec department for the salaries?
That'd be a challenge.
That would be a challenge.
Especially the $3,800.
Yeah, because part of this was because we had two employees employed there for the month of May, and the other one is because the maintenance supervisor is retiring, and we have, that's, we have to pay out his vacation and sick days and things that he has left yet.
Let's discount that. What about the CDL training?
Could that be taken out? That would be something that we would have had, we would need to check with Baker Tilly. I have no idea if that can be taken out of ARP funding or not.
Ground maintenance is the trees, ain't it? The cemetery?
Yes.
That one would be.
Yes, that was to take down the trees.
All the money is budgeted under one.
Okay. So a motion made, seconded, without further discussion. If there's none, or any motion to approve?
I think the motions are.
Okay, all those in favor, sorry. I'm getting tired now, way to go.
You're tired, right?
All those in favor signify by saying?
We're all ready to. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Can you read it again?
I can't. Thank God they don't require one reading. I read them fast.
Larry, you got us all ready to chase down a food truck.
Moving on, under new business. Moving under new business, we've already taken care of item A, so move down to item B, the ADA Transition Plan Update. Just, I'll point out a few questions, if you have any. I hope everybody had a moment to review it. There's a quiz in just a moment. We've got to read this whole thing in its entirety. It's about?
Twenty-five pages.
Twenty-five pages.
Wait, what?
I'm being sarcastic.
You better be.
I just wanted to see you pass out.
You better be, kid.
You guys are impeaching me over here, I want you for that one. Okay, so a couple, just a couple of things I do want to point out to you. If you go under page four, all right, so everybody just turn to page four, and this is under the ProWAG. See that? It's about second, went up from the bottom there. It says by the end of 2014, that will be changed, okay? That's just a little typo. So let's go to page 13.
Should say 2024.
2014.
2023.
Is it 2023?
Yes.
Wait a second, you're on page four.
Yes.
Right before that, the Uniformed Petro fifth accessibility guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Second line there, covered by D-A-B-A.
ADA.
ADA.
Almost certainly. Yes. Right here. I got it.
You found the hidden mistake in there. Gosh. All right, let's go to 13 now. These may be questions you all had, and I'm just trying to get them ready.
Thirteen page?
Page 13.
Okay.
Yep. And it's under contract services. We do not have a lottery, so that will be stricken from that. That's second paragraph, the bottom, very last sentence. Okay? Next page, page 14, under communications access. I do not know of any auxiliary aids interpreters, so we will be, that will be something that will be changing as well. 14, right at the top. Yes, right.
Website?
Where it says auxiliary aids interpreters.
Oh.
That will be removed. And my other note is page 20. And under the funding strategies, that's D on there, please remove commissioners, okay? We don't have any city commissioners.
Where is, here, I see.
Yep. And?
That's listed twice.
Where is it at? I'm sorry, did I miss another one?
Okay.
Oh.
Funding strategies, the second paragraph, the city commissioners, and then the steering committee also requires the city.
Okay, remove it both places. Remove word commissioners.
Steering committee, it should say to the city council.
Council.
So commissioners should just be replaced by council.
Yeah. The first one you remove, it's already says city council, so straighten it all together.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, hang on, let me get my pages out of order here. I'll be in trouble. I miss, I have one. Now, if you look on page 16, there's no change here, just for clarity. Ramp, the curb ramp inventory, there's a, the first paragraph, it says spreadsheet has been updated to reflect the same data, but without any code, or we can put that back in if we need to, but that's been updated by Doty and Janice in the mayor's office. So that has been done. And the same thing under sidewalk inventory, and that paragraph, first paragraph, it says basically the same thing. But, yeah, so that's been updated. And so now, I know you all got questions, so hopefully I answered them, if there's not as many.
Do you have any? Most of them, aye?
Good. Except for that one you surprised me on.
Okay. Under program services and activities.
Okay.
The way I read this is any services that are offered on city property, they have to be ADA accessible. Am I reading that correctly?
Let me reread it. That are held by the government on government-owned property.
Look at the last, or the second last sentence, Jeff, it says special private events on city property are also included.
Such as seasonal events at parks or recreational facilities or city fairs. Yeah. I'm going to let the city attorney interpret that, because he's the guy that makes the big bucks. You haven't read much tonight, so read that. Well, I mean, I circle back to the first sentence, that state and local governments are required to provide access to any program, services, meetings, or functions that are held by the government on government-owned property or contracted by a government entity. This access must be reviewed in its entirety, may not be denied. A sample list of programs and services include items such as education or trainings, public transportation, public health clinics, public... Special or private events on city property are also included. So even if the, I read that as saying, even if it's not a function that's being held by the government itself, that those events, such as seasonal events at parks or recreational...
No. And while we may want to change that, that may be in there because that is what's required to be in there, that it's active.
Yeah. Well, I mean, obviously, that, the first thing that brings to mind is Switzer Fest.
Yeah, exactly. That was the question.
Yeah. Is that special or private events?
This is a plane, this is not a, it's not like we, or concrete, but.
Yeah, I think the third or fourth sentence, this access must be reviewed in its entirety and sure accessibility of those disabilities, that must be reviewed, I think, kind of covers if the situation comes up.
Yeah.
Then it's reviewed to see if it is accessible. If not, then we can do what we need to do. I mean, I think that's what, that kind of covers as far as that goes.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it's.
If somebody comes to make a complaint, says, well, I don't think this is ADA accessible, then it can be reviewed and make an decision.
Hey, what about our parks and the things we have, their devices for kids?
We have some.
Well, I mean, are they all ADA?
You would not be required to make every single one.
Okay.
Our bathrooms at City Hall are getting made ADA downstairs.
Yeah, that would be different.
There you go.
And in other words, our new equipment, we're putting out a shaver bar.
To the question.
There is going to be some ADA equipment out there. There's going to be a swing for someone or a child.
It doesn't have to be across the board.
No, there's no way you could possibly make a slide ADA compliant. I mean, you could, but it'd be.
Just asking the question.[1664.25]
It would be near, not impossible, but.
Wouldn't be a slide anymore.
It'd be a slide.
It'd have some sort of lift.
Yeah.
You could, yeah.
But the, but the initial question's a very good one, and John's answer as well, is, is that it would guide us, or it would encourage us to address those situations on a case-by-case basis and provide some guidance on what our plan would be to address them, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's about as long.
Sorry, trying to move this along.
I have one other, on page, page five, and again, this is.
What's the piece?
Page five.
Five.
The, the second paragraph there, right before you start program accessibility, the last sentence in that paragraph, it says, these modifications, I was talking about ADA modifications, will provide equality of opportunity, but the city cannot guarantee, guarantee equality of results. I've read that ten times, and I still don't know what that means.
Just a lawyer, how would you interpret it?
That's, that's secret lawyer code, I can't tell everybody, no. My best stab at that, wrapping my brain around.
Because it's going to provide the opportunity, but it can't guarantee it.
It, it's going to provide everybody with equal, these modifications, it's going to provide everybody the same opportunity. It does not mean that everybody's going to enjoy them in the same way. I guess that's the best way I can put it.
Sounds good to me, you earned your pay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Some people will enjoy those opportunities more than others.
I could have came up with that.
Well, alright. So what.
I'm gonna send my next student loan payment to you.
What we need to do is adopt this tonight. This is something that has to be updated and submitted to the state. This, by not having this updated, it can affect our funds from NDOT. So community crossings, call for projects, you know, the Washington Street, Main Street, TEL Street, sidewalk projects and all that, could all be in jeopardy, I guess you could say, maybe not those specific because they've been awarded, but future ones could be affected. Is there a motion to approve or adopt?
Motion to adopt with changes presented tonight.
Motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry, any further discussion? Any none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you all, that's been a, this ADA thing has been Janice and I's baby. Steve's the ADA coordinator, he's helped a lot too.
Larry did second that.
It's been our baby for over a year. And it feels good to get it done. You know, it's, we accomplished it, so it feels good.
It's not going away.
No, and as a city, we're really trying to, to improve ADA for everyone, such as our bathrooms downstairs, those are going to be made into family unisex bathrooms, a baby changing table in one of them. So it, it'd be a nice addition to the park when it's used for a lot of events that people are able to use. Because before, the doors, the doors did not meet ADA requirement to get in. And they're, they're going to cut that block and widen it, so anybody in a wheelchair or walker, whatever, it's, it's a lot easier on me. So moving on, item C, ordinance repealing licensing and inspections of bicycles. I laugh a little bit because it's kind of, what is this, twenty twenty-three, fourteen?
Uh, no, this is ordinance twelve oh three.
Okay.
The ordinance is. You want me to explain what's going on here?
Yeah, you can explain it, I can do it real quick. How long, who's more wind?
I can go, I can go fast.
Go fast.
Basically, this provision, and this is me speculating on certain aspects of it. The provisions in our municipal code that required licensing and inspection of bicycles, the entire code section, the traffic code, included this in it. My suspicion is that this was some version of a uniform code that was adopted by cities all over the state and had these bicycle licensing provisions in them. And so it was probably just adopted at the time. I'm not sure that it was ever enforced, this was adopted.
No, it was enforced, because I have some of those license plates. You used to have to have license plates in the back of your bicycles.
Yeah.
And I have some of them metal plates from TEL City back in nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies, they're collectibles, so if you've got any.
When I was a child in the eighties, we did not have these on our bikes.
I didn't have them.
Somewhere along the line, the city stopped enforcing this. And I believe that it's just an antiquated system that is something that we should not be in the business of licensing and inspecting in the first place. It was brought to, to my attention by the mayor, quickly investigated what it would take to repeal that specific provision. We are keeping the sections with regard to regulation of the use of bicycles, so you know, you can't, you have to obey traffic laws and everything, we're not, we're not repealing any of those, it's just the licensing and inspection.
Does everybody understand what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-three, twelve oh three, or whatever, is that right?
Ordinance number twelve oh three.
Number, oh, I have the twenty twenty-three in there, so ordinance twelve oh three. Okay.
Motion.
Motion made by John, seconded by Julie, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, please read ordinance twelve oh three in its entirety.
Do it, it'll get me off of food trucks. Ordinance number twelve oh three, an ordinance of the common council, the city of TEL City, Indiana, repealing portions of ordinance number five thirty-eight adopted on January seventh, nineteen eighty. Whereas the common council, the city of TEL City, Indiana, adopted ordinance number five thirty-eight on January seventh, nineteen eighty. And whereas ordinance number five thirty-eight adopted and implemented the traffic code of the city of TEL City, Indiana. And whereas certain provisions of ordinance number five thirty-eight required licensing and inspection of bicycles in the city of TEL City, Indiana. And whereas the city of TEL City no longer wishes to require such licensing and inspection of bicycles. Now therefore, be it, be it hereby ordained by the common council of TEL City, Indiana, as follows. Section one, sections ten point one through ten point eight of ordinance number five thirty-eight is hereby repealed. Section two, all the rest and remainder of ordinance number five thirty-eight shall remain in full force and effect. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the common council, the city of TEL City, Indiana, and completion of any other legal requirements, all in the manner as provided by law, passed and adopted by the common council of TEL City, Indiana, this fifteenth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, you've had ordinance number twelve oh three in its entirety, there's a motion to suspend for second, third reading by title only. Motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second, third reading by title only, ordinance number twelve oh three, an ordinance of the common council of the city of TEL City, Indiana, repealing portions of ordinance number five thirty-eight adopted on January seventh, nineteen eighty. Third reading, ordinance number twelve oh three, an ordinance of the common council of the city of TEL City, Indiana, repealing portions of ordinance number five thirty-eight adopted on January seventh, nineteen eighty. First, second, third readings are completed, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by John, is there a second? Seconded by Larry, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The last, we saved the best for last, item under new business D is discussion on street vacation.
And it's my fault this is on here.
And it's not a street going on vacation.
You can blame the lawyer for the fact that we're here this late.
Yeah, blame.
I will keep this very brief. Fifteenth Street and where the old GE guard shack is at, the Hinton property is immediately adjacent to it. Back in nineteen sixty-nine, the Hinton's and GE petitioned to vacate that portion of Fifteenth Street, as well as the portion of Reuben Street that would have passed from thirteenth Street, no, from fourteenth Street to Fifteenth Street. I have here a stack of meeting minutes, proceedings for the vacation of a portion of Fifteenth Street and Reuben Street, a resolution that was adopted by the Board of Public Works. The question arose because somebody wanted to get a building permit to build something where that street would have been. They were under the belief it had been vacated. Steve started investigating, Connie started looking into this, and it did not appear that it had been vacated. So the question came to me, well, we've got all this stuff, it looks like they did a bunch of things, but there was never an ordinance adopted. What I discovered, thankfully, from another attorney on the municipal attorney list serve, is that the current version of adopting, or vacating a street was not adopted by the Indiana legislature until the nineteen eighties. So prior to that, it was largely a municipal and then judicial function to vacate a street. There was never anything recorded in the recorder's office, and so there are probably other streets in TEL City that may have been vacated back in the day that don't appear to be vacated because there's no recorded instrument. Long story short, though, I've researched this, I've looked into it, they did everything they were supposed to do, and subsequently operated as if the street had been vacated. I do have a resolution, resolution one dash nineteen sixty-nine that was adopted. Do not have to read it.
I thought you didn't have to read it, you've got a stack there.
No, but it's just, it, it actually, it's really easy anyway.
Call door dash.
What I am proposing that the council do is authorize me to draft an ordinance to adopt at our June regular meeting, to actually vacate the street. I will record the resolution, we would adopt the ordinance, and then record the ordinance after that is done, to properly vacate this street that for all intents and purposes has been vacated since before I was born. But because the process was different back then, there was never anything recorded at the recorder's office. And so it appeared when this individual applied for a permit, that the street had never been vacated. That would certainly be news to, it was news to the Hinton's, it would certainly be news to GE as well, because if it were not vacated, then their guard shack, as well as the area immediately adjacent to the north side of the existing building, would be located on city streets. And we know that there was never any intention of that, so that is what I would propose. I discussed this with another municipal attorney that has been practicing since nineteen sixty-nine, and that was his suggestion as well. To record the resolutions that we have, adopt an ordinance, record that, and then the streets will be vacated, as the intention always was. So, if the council, if I have the council's blessing to draft an ordinance, I will record this resolution prior to our next meeting, so that it is at least of notice. And I will take that as blessing enough for me to go ahead.
What do you do?
So that's all I've got for that.
So there's a, there's been a blessing and a motion made by.
Steve does have, Steve does have one thing.
Okay.
Go ahead, take care of business, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, because we were about to close that issue up.
Can I assure the Hinton's they will get a letter stating this then?
What will happen is that when, once we've adopted that ordinance, it will be official. So, so in essence, they'll get something in writing, absolutely.
And they'll start paying taxes on it.
Yes. And the Hinton's will get, the Hinton's will get half of Fifteenth Street, GE will get the other half, because that's the way it was supposed to always be. GE will get all of Reuben Street, because they are contiguous on both sides of that.
Okay, so there was a motion and a blessing made by Larry. There's a second, seconded by John. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright.
I was just interested in seeing the names of who, who did this back then in nineteen sixty-nine.
It was the Hinton's and GE.
Well, no, I mean, the people involved in city, is Mayor Hagard in there?
Mayor, Mayor Hagard.
Tim Tableman and Earl Malone.
Yes.
Who was the attorney?
Oh my goodness. Grandpa had it contested, I'm sure there's someone.
He was a clerk, clerk treasurer?
Yeah.
None of these documents.
I've met the copies of the minutes out of the book.
Were that the handwritten ones?
They were handwritten.
I was just hearing right behind.
Alright, well, I'm ready to close this meeting out here, y'all, so we're going to reel this in. I'm going to skip my marriage, but I'm going to save it for June fifth, I know you're all going to be sad, you can just hold off. Yeah, I'll forward it to you. So, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Larry, seconded by Julie, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.